Well, it's seven o'clock, so I'll call this meeting of the Roxbury Board of Finance to order. Welcome everyone. See, before we proceed, Julie, do you want to say anything about Ed not being here?
No, I can. Ed's dad is taking a turn for the worse. And we admitted him into hospice today. So we're will be lucky if he's with us by the end of the week.
Oh, I'm really sorry.
Thank you. So he's a
Sorry, Julie.
We had to get a lot of stuff done today and but he's yeah, he's he's beat. He's been running all day. So don't take a quiet night.
Good for them.
Is his dad at regional hospice in Danbury?
They are, and he's at the Watermark in Southbury. And they're bringing their team in there.
Got it. Great.
Thank you, Mary Jane. Hello, Mary Jane.
All right. Yeah, our best to Ed and Ed's dad. And to you, of course.
Yeah, so it's just never a good time and always sad.
Yeah, it's not easy, not easy. Okay, um. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the November, was it twenty sixth meeting?
It
Sixteenth, sixteenth.
Sixteen.
November sixteenth. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 And then likewise for the December special, most recent special meeting, Julie, what was the date on that?
January eleventh.
January eleventh. Has everyone had an opportunity to read those minutes?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, um. And I don't have the agenda in front of me. What's next?
Let me put that up for you.
ARPA.
ARPA.
Let's do ARPA.
Please, and thank you.
Patrick, would you like to do a run through on this?
Absolutely. So we have had, which I'm pleased to say, no changes since our original discussions over the summer. We do have the dollars in for the Community Foundation that we had already approved. And, you know, other than progressing on some of these things where we got a little bit more information, it's pretty much the same number. The obviously Painter Hill came in less than what we were planning, which was great. It's a it was very successful. So that money adjusted. So as it stands right now, it's been approved by the Board of Selectmen and it is up to the Board of Finance to approve. After that point, we'll go to a public hearing and we can start dispersing funds.
Yeah, and these are essentially the same numbers that we were working with a month ago, right?
Absolutely. So this is for the Public Health District, it's fifteen hundred dollars, a hundred and five total for emergency services, which is the striker stretcher, the tendon fibulators, and the twenty five statewide digital radio system. The nonprofits that were assisting, not only are we giving the thirty thousand dollars to compensate for the picket and fiddling, but we have, just as we originally laid out, five thousand dollars for Greenwood's Counseling, five thousand dollars for Litchfield Hills Chore, Friends of the Senior Center, Friends of the Library, Roxbury Land Trust, Chapag, all get five thousand dollars. Forty five hundred, actually stays at five thousand for the Senior Center, my learning program. And then the rest is basically to Bridges, which is going to be our infrastructure part of it. So we're still at the same numbers, and I do apologize, part of the process was to go through this vetting process. It was finally finalized and we are great. So hands down, like I just have to compliment, you know, this process and the Board of Finance. We didn't just jump into it trying to spend money. We actually really researched it and we were able to unfortunately delay it enough that we were able to know the rules. So now we know that we're doing things, you know, correctly.
Can can we back up to the nonprofits? I still have a question about that.
Go ahead.
I thought that we were supposed to open that up to for nonprofits to apply.
We did.
Okay.
Yep. So the reason for the delay in December, the reason why we didn't have a Board of Finance meeting and there was nothing to discuss is because we had placed ads. Actually, one of the ads was like over eight hundred dollars. We had placed ads, we had given all the information to the Community, Connecticut Community Foundation to do that vetting process. Once all the publications went out and we were able to broadcast it out, the end, the net result is there was no changes. There was no new parties that were interested, but we can show our due diligence that we put everything out, you know, to make sure that everybody was aware to be as transparent as possible.
Patrick, did our, did Bridgewater and Washington do the same thing?
No, um. They did not. Bridgewater actually took the lump sum because of the way their loss was and and there was a financial cap on it. Their budget was small enough that they could actually just apply it to the general fund. Different towns did different things. I, I, you know, looking at the other towns, I'm very, very proud of what this team came together to produce because we are helping nonprofits, we're helping our firefighters. I mean, I know we had talked about the Firehouse Edition for a long time, but that not being on the table, I think we're using a good this is a good use of those funds to offset, you know, other expenses that we may have for the town.
That's great.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Feel free.
Now, am I right that Andy and Mary Schenke are somehow going to be involved in a go forward basis?
Correct. So what's going to happen once you approve this? Like I said, we have to go to a public hearing. It has to be an oversight committee. So it'll be Andy, myself, and then there was meant to be one person from the community. So, you know, I think we all know Mary, but she comes very highly regarded and and she was a very, you know, eager to help. So once this gets solidified, that it's going to be our job as a committee to make sure that everybody follows the appropriate paperwork because there is an application process for there. There are checkups to make sure that the funds go where they need to go. And that's part of the revision and the finalization of the ARPA funds.
It's great.
Yep.
Anyone else on the board have?
Kim, you're on mute.
Anyone else have questions or comments, concerns?
I Andy, it's Kim Baron. I just want to reiterate that we do have to go to a town meeting.
Yep.
To authorize this plan after the public hearing.
Yep.
So I just wanted to make sure that was understood by everybody.
And what do you think the timing on that should be? What can it be?
Could be next month, I think, you know, as long as everybody's applied, we can, we can move forward with this. And just to reiterate, we have fifty percent of the funds now, Kim, and then the rest of them are going to be coming, I believe, this spring.
In June. So so the the federal government will release probably the second tranche of the six hundred thirty six in May. And then they give the states thirty days to release them to the municipality. So I assume it'll be in June again. We'll get the second second batch of money from the federal government.
And Kim, can you have a public hearing and a town meeting? Or just a town meeting?
I guess I guess you could have a public hearing and then go to a town meeting.
You don't have to.
No, you don't have to.
Okay, you don't. You don't. But you definitely have to have a town meeting.
Yeah.
It has to be, it has to be voted on just based on our, you know, town structure. We have a town.
Right. It's the dollar amount. We're talking about a lot of money.
Kim, can you remind us what that total is? For the two tranches?
Hundred, it is six hundred thirty six thousand dollars in total.
Okay. Yeah, that's real money.
Yeah, it is.
For with our, looking at our budget on a yearly basis, that makes a significant impact. And we're able to put it to some good use, so.
Those are the savings that you brought to us with having our own crew.
There will be more. I can assure you, there will be more. We've, but I won't get into that discussion now. Let's stick to ARPA at this point.
Okay, any other questions or comments about ARPA?
Andy, do you need a motion?
Well, before we did that, I'd just like to give Jimmy or Sarah an opportunity to comment if they want to. We don't have a lot of members in the public, but if they have anything to say, I'd be interested in hearing it.
Nope, I think you guys are doing a good job. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Nothing from Sarah. Okay, so, um. Is there a motion to approve the proposed distribution of the ARPA funds?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, very good.
Congratulations all. We've been talking about this for what, seven, eight months now? So job well done, team. Thank you. We can move on to newer things.
From this one.
It's been a while. It's definitely been a while.
Kim, a special thanks to you for becoming Uber expert on the red.
Thank you.
Yeah. You're very welcome. My pleasure.
All right, first selectmen's report. Patrick, what have you got for us?
Excellent. Well, um, I, the first order of business, I need to have a motion to add the Affordable Housing Feasibility Plan. It needs to be added to the twenty one, twenty two capital plan. This is a to spend, it's fourteen thousand six hundred dollars in grant funds that we've already received from the state. But we have to add it to this year's capital plan and then we can adopt it at the next meeting. So we could adopt this as well, but because we're adding it to it. So this, this project was originally authorized by the Board of Selectmen on July twenty second, two thousand twenty one. Grant funds were applied for in July twenty twenty one, approved in September, and then funding was already received in November of two thousand twenty one.
But now we need to add it to the budget.
Correct, because we are in this year's capital plan, so.
Is there a motion to that effect?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion. Does everyone understand what Patrick is talking about?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
I will finish. No problem. We had to, by state law or their statute that they came up with, we had to come up with affordable housing plan. We had grant funds to do so. So with that committee and and part of this, Jocelyn Ayers has been working and Kim Tester is now chairing that committee to work on this affordable housing plan. So this is funding that that work for that Jocelyn's working on.
Thank you.
So there, they have their public hearing to talk about different affordable options is going to be next week. That's when their public hearing is. So they're going to kind of continue with this. So there was some grant money to do this project. And it's very similar to the the P O C D Planning and Development of Conservation that they had done a few years ago. It's the same kind of process. So we're obligated to look at options. And there's been, you know, this kind of housing steering committee that is, you know, working with Jocelyn Ayers and Kim Tester. And there's a committee that that just kind of discussed different options and how that feasibility study on it. So everything is just a discussion at this point.
So this is state mandated, right?
It is state mandated.
When do we have to have the plan done?
June.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Comments, concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any extensions and may votes? Motion carries.
As we move on, okay, so I I believe they forwarded an email on Friday. They gave a little bit more clarification to the infrastructure bill. Much like with how we started with ARPA funding, we know that there's money that's been approved for infrastructure. The great news is the federal bridge program. So basically, any bridge that's over twenty feet that would qualify for federal funding like Weller's Bridge is no longer an eighty twenty grant. It is a one hundred percent grant.
Oh.
Being that
So where is minor bridge in this process?
Minor Bridge is not a replacement. It's not a critical failure. So there are repairs, cracks, and things that need to be done to minor bridge. But it's not considered a critical failure.
Too bad.
I know, and it goes by a stink ranking where they look at a whole bunch of different bridges. You know, obviously not all are reported. And then sometimes there's just natural disasters. So we knew after Hurricane Ida that Squire Bridge or the Squire Road Bridge and Painter Hill were basically catastrophic damage due to that storm. They weren't even on our radar. We had to start talking about them because it was a critical failure. So with minor bridge, it's, 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 they had replaced the bridge, what, twenty years ago? But they didn't replace the footings. So it's scouring behind the footing walls that are starting to break it away. The great news is we've already kind of started working on design for it. And now that twenty percent or eight hundred thousand dollars is no longer an obligation to the town. So right now, we're looking a little bit more and we're heading into this next budget season. We're able to reduce some of those, some of those expenses. So that would be for Weller's Bridge would be a hundred percent. We already know that we have the minor road, minor bridge road culvert and Davenport culvert that have already been applied for grants. Those are already built into our capital plan. And then the next thing would be the repairs to minor road bridge. And I I've been trying to separate the two. There's the culvert and then there's the bridge. And then Squire Road, which the bridge on Squire with the culvert on Squire Road is something that I I plan that the Public Works will do, just like Painter Hill. It's going to be do done a little bit more. It's bigger. It's higher. So we're looking at like a pre manufactured headwalls on that, but something that the town could actually do. And I've had a little bit of experience with that, meeting with Cardinal, meeting with our Public Works guys. So we know that we can handle this. I'm very excited and much, much like Painter Hill, not only is it just done in house and the town is, crews are very excited to do this. It's going to save a lot of money. And that's kind of how I'm looking at it. And we're going to
Ronald, Patrick?
What?
Can you put a number on the savings?
Um, not yet, not yet, because we haven't come up with a design that I like. We may spend, spend a little bit more, more money for, you know, if we're going to save money overall, going with a concrete box culvert, aluminum box culvert. There's a lot of different options that we can go, go with. But ultimately, it's going to be the right decision for that, for that. And we want to, we want to have a long term result. I mean, a normal galvanized bridge is going to, going to be about fifty years where something that's concrete is going to go more eighty years. And and the reason why that this is, and I've done, been doing a lot more research, just like minor bridge culvert that was installed in nineteen forty one with a fifty year lifespan. Most of the bridges and culverts in this town were built between the nineteen forties and nineteen fifties. So everything is really coming up on its, you know, much overdue in many cases of its expiration cycle. So it seems like there's a lot coming up, but I think leveraging it, working with the crew, I think we can definitely get this done. So when I
I know that at one point we were looking at a survey that that would look at all of the bridges and allow us to do a phase in of and start to put money away the same way we do for the, for the, for the capital budget. For the capital equipment budget is, is that still something you're thinking about?
Something we're actually going ahead and doing. We did have funds for that, you know, we had talked about that on the Board of Finance, and I believe we have about ten more bridges and culverts to do. It's not all of them, but you know, it's, it's, it's the ones that were on our radar. So to have that executed plan of when we're going to have these life cycles. Yeah, I'm literally working on that now. So that's actually an exciting thing.
Did anybody taken a look at Judge Bridge?
Where is that a road or culvert problem?
No, it's a bridge problem. Judge Bridge Road Bridge over the Chapag.
Oh, right.
Judge, well, that was redone, what, five years ago?
Judge Bridge. Yeah, but if, if the, if the feds are going to pay for a hundred percent of it, I'd like somebody to take a look at it.
Yeah.
Because I don't know how long this infrastructure program lasts and when you have to, what, what, when eligibility is, is conferred. I think that's the only other bridge over the Chapag that we have.
If I can just add to that, Judge Bridge was redone in two thousand twelve, I think, was completed. It was done in two phases, so.
In order for it
About ten years.
In order for it to qualify for this grant, it has to be a failing, it has to be classified as a failure. So that's where, you know, because we had already predetermined it on Weller's Bridge, we were a perfect candidate for this.
Is this the state, the state making that decision, making that assessment?
It is the state making the assessment on the bridge, but the bridge classification for the federal funding. It's only the federal funding in this infrastructure bill that's a hundred percent. So the difference between whether it's a local bridge or a federal bridge is based on the size. So if a bridge is over twenty feet long, then that's, that's considered a federal bridge. If there's any bridges that are on a, on a state road, those are already the state's responsibility.
So I'm not a hundred percent sure. Kim, you're probably better at this than I am, but I think the only other bridge over the Chapag is Judge Bridge in Roxbury. And that's more than twenty feet, I think.
Yeah, that's correct. That is correct. You are correct in saying that. Yes.
If it qualifies for it, absolutely, you know.
Nobody goes, I mean, nobody ever goes down there. Somebody should go down and just take a look.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I've been working a little bit closer with these guys in it. I've pulled in like Doug DeVesta and and different people locally just to get their opinion. I'm actually going to be meeting with Richard Crowley, talking about Botsford Hill, because that may it's, we may not get a grant for that. And it's, it's not considered a critical failure at this point. So it might be a head wall repair. So I'm looking at different mason options for that to start to reduce that cost if possible. Kind of just looking at a whole lot of different options, but just the network of people in this town has made that very, you know, great, actually.
It's good. Patrick, did we get the grant monies in for Davenport?
Kim, I don't believe so because it's replenishment, so no.
Yeah, no. So we have to budget for the whole value of the cost of the of of minor bridge road culvert and Davenport. We have to budget the whole thing in order to get reimbursed fifty percent. So, so the answer is yes, we have, we have it. Um, but we have to, we have to budget and it's a reimbursable grant.
Got it.
Of the bridge program.
Um, and, okay. I think I'm good with all of the bridges as for now. But yeah, if there's anything else, I just don't think there is at this point. We are going to be looking at some road reconstruction moving into spring of like Grassy Hill and, you know, there's a lot of drainage issues right up the road at Paul's House with the Swale and Schoolhouse and, you know, Judge Bridge. That's why I was wondering about the bridge because the road has a lot of drainage issues as well. So that's going to be some local talent as well to try and get in there and come up with the proper plan for that. This week, we also have, and by the way, is there any other questions on any of the bridges and culverts or any of that money that's going on? It's looking great with Town Aid Road. I mean, it shouldn't be that big of a deal. I will say the next part of that going through the capital plan is looking at the machinery, going to, you know, Washington Public Works, Middlebury, Butch and I, and some of the guys learning what machinery to buy, what to replace, what to fix. I'm kind of looking at some of the life cycles of some of these machines like the, the large, you know, machine that's up at the transfer station, having it rebuilt. Washington just had one done and the thing was brand new, all new hoses and they do the wiring, they paint it. These things are brand new and they spent sixty thousand on that. And when you're looking at a replacement cost on some of these machines of two hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred thousand, that's, that's a humongous savings when you're extending to that lifecycle. One of the feedback that I got from just about every Public Works that I run into or every other first selectman that I run into is that Mack trucks or the older Mack trucks are worth saving. You know, and if they are, then, then that's a great thing because some of the newer trucks with the electronics, it's hard to repair. So these other trucks, so they're literally buying old used trucks and redoing them, even if they need new frame, frame rails or whatever has to be replaced. So those are other options I'm looking at as well because we're looking at, you know, some of the machines that we have a life cycle on them and and we're going to need to enter these into. So that's going to be all part of the budget plan. I just kind of wanted to fill you in as to the research that I was doing and the status, but I'm looking at every capital expense overall and how we can get the most bang for our buck, if you will. Um. I had already mentioned that next week we have the Affordable Housing Discussion. Tomorrow I have the public hearing on cannabis. Just an open discussion, not to apply an opinion, but just to hear from some of the town. There's been some email feedback that's come in as well. And then that would go to a public hearing as well with whatever decisions we decide as a town.
Has the state made any rulings on cannabis? I haven't followed it, but.
What do you mean? Well, other than the legalization, how it affects the town is, I, you know, trying not to have too much of an opinion, but I'll just be honest. It's the commercial growth, the commercial sale and use on public property that I would like to have some kind of formal, you know, ordinance for. You know, unless I'm missing something, I just don't think it's appropriate for our community. You know, we've had luckily through the election process, I got to talk to a lot of people. So there's definitely got a feel, a feeling of what the town, you know, wants and and what we see moving forward. So the application process starts for that, I believe, beginning of July for the state. If you wanted to start a commercial distribution or production, you'd have to do that. So before that even starts, you know, we can have an ordinance in effect. Not that it's not appropriate for the state. It does some wonderful things. Just probably not Roxbury. If I'm wrong, be on the call tomorrow. Tell me why. That's what I'm hoping for.
My guess is that we don't, that they don't want us any more than we want them.
Yeah, there's, you know, there's other, there's other towns that are going to take advantage of that tax benefit. You know, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of people, you know, a lot of towns that want to jump on this bandwagon. You know, and and my personal feeling, there's going to be a lot of rush to to get this done, but I use the comparison of, remember when yogurt, frozen yogurt shops came out and they were everywhere and then they all went away? There's only so much of an demand, but I could be mistaken, but that's kind of, you know, Roxbury is a special place and I think it's my job to preserve that. So that's, that's my stance. So
Cannabis does have an existing market, you know, I'm just saying.
It does, it does. But do we need to sell it? You know, at the station, I mean.
Dude, it would be totally cool, man.
It wouldn't be bad for the tax base, that's for sure.
No, it would add, add revenue. It definitely would. And I can see why that's appealing for many, many communities. You know, but with all the other funding that's coming out, you know, what like this infrastructure bill is, you know, a good example of, you know, you just kind of keep researching and researching, waiting for some kind of, you know, ruling on it of dispersment of funds. And I knew we'd be able to do it, but that's where some of this planning, getting it into place really is, is helping us pay off, you know, especially here on this Board of Finance. Very confident with the ability and what we pay off, you know, especially here on this Board of Finance. Very confident with, uh, the ability and what we've done. So any other questions? That's about all I got. For this meeting, anyway.
Good first job.
Patrick, tell them about, uh, the audit.
Oh, my apologies, there was one more thing. Uh, our audit, uh, we, Kim has just, uh, applied, uh, uh, for an extension until February due to our auditor. Um, this is truly, well, last year was a, a COVID extension. This year is a true COVID extension, because Rico is, uh, sick with COVID at the moment. So.
Oh, that's not good.
Yeah, he, uh, uh, Kim, you spoke to him today.
I did, I spoke to him today, and he, he's doing okay. He sounds terrible, but, but he said he really feels better than he sounds. He's working from home. He's, he's working, but he's working from home. I don't know how he's doing it, but.
Was this, uh, he was vaccinated, but this was just one of those crossover things?
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of people I know have had that, but many of them said it's just a bad cold.
Yeah, that's what he said, but he, he just sounded.
Sure, yeah.
And he said it was okay to tell everybody.
Okay, nice.
I just wanna make that clear.
Thank you, Kim. What else, Patrick, Kim?
That's, that's all I have. Um, and then you can continue with your meeting, I think.
All right. I guess the next thing on the agenda then is the electoral officers. Is there a nomination, uh, for chairman?
I nominate you. And I nominate you.
I'll second.
Are there any further nominations for, uh, chairman? Hearing notice, there are motion that the nominations be closed.
So moved.
All those in favor of me, say aye. Motion carries. When I, I, uh, texted with, uh, Ed earlier today, um, he said that he would be honored, uh, to be considered for vice chairman. Um, so I just wanted to throw that out there. Um, are there any nominations for vice chairman?
I nominated Katie.
Are there any further nominations for vice chairman? Hearing none, is there a motion that nominations be closed?
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye. Uh, all those in favor of Ed for, uh, vice chairman, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Congratulations, Ed. That's all the officers we have. We don't have a secretary. Do we, Julie?
We do.
You don't have a secretary. Um, your next one, nope. You don't have a secretary. Oh, actually, it was, it was Patrick.
It was me, yes.
I'm getting my boards confused. I'm sorry.
I knew that, I, I knew that.
Do we need a se- do we need a secretary?
The only reason to have a secretary is in case Julie is not here.
Right, but, but could the vice chair do, perform, could we make a vice chair secretary? Ed, Ed took the minute several times, I recall. Did he not, Julie?
He did, but he was secretary then.
Oh, good point. Thank you.
He did, and it was a crossover between a land use meeting and you guys, and so I had to go with land use. And so we, so we try very hard, we not to schedule those anymore, especially because of Zoom. You can only have one account open at a time. So.
Well, would anyone like, uh, like to be secretary? It looks really good on your resume. And, uh, it's not very onerous.
I'm willing to do it. I've taken minutes, lots of minutes before.
Well, are there nominations?
I nominate Holly Star.
Are there any further nominations? Is there a motion to close nominations? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All those in favor of Holly as secretary, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Congratulations, Holly.
Thank you.
Night for you.
This is most fitting, most fitting. Since you're taking over Patrick's spot.
And, and Holly, I don't, I don't mean to take away from your wonderful moment here. I'm pretty sure I was elected the same way. And that's how it happened.
It's fair, right?
Um, the final thing on the agenda is the, uh, meeting schedule for, uh, next year, well, this year. Um, has everyone had an opportunity to take a look at that? Any, uh, comments, any criticisms, any issues that anyone sees?
Well, could I, I'd like to make a request, and I, um, this is very selfish of me. But since Dina and I are in Europe, June, July, till the middle of September. Um, you know, that, it's, seven is one in the morning for me. Is, would it ever be possible to have the odd meeting during the summertime, maybe like over a lunchtime period? Would, would that work for us, or?
It's an interesting question. I think one reason that we do these meetings in the evening is to make them accessible to the public.
Uh, okay.
Um, and we, you know, we often don't meet in July and August anyway.
That's what I thought, and if we do have issues, you know, we can exchange emails, I imagine.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Just thought I'd throw that out there.
No, it doesn't hurt to ask.
Or you all can come to France, and we'll just have a meeting there.
Oh, I'd love that.
Okay, done.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the proposed schedule? Is there a second? And any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you. Um, I think that's everything on the agenda, is it not?
The efficiency is amazing.
Well, you know, we all have things to do.
Well, I, I must compliment you on that incredibly beautiful, heavy door that you made today.
Well, thank you.
One and three-quarter inches, that's gonna weigh a ton.
Yeah, it's, it's probably a hundred pounds. I'm glad that I have a younger helper to help me move it. Thank you, thank you. Um, all right, is there anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye. Very good. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Um, Holly, uh, welcome. We're very glad to have you with us. Uh, and, uh, Julie, again, please, uh, convey our, uh, concern and well wishes to both you and Ed.
Right.
We're thinking about you.
Thank you.
All right, everyone.
Good night, everybody.